All right. I'll call this second quarterly session of April through June 2020. Today is May 21st, 2020. County Commission to Order at 6:00 PM. I'll have Caleb, can you say the pledge of allegiance for the rest of the group, please?
Sure, Will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to approval of minutes, and boy, do we have a bunch. So, start with the first one, March 17th, 2020, our emergency meeting.
So moved.
I'll second that. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the March 17th, 2020 emergency meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. March 19th, regular meeting.
I'll move approval of March 19th, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions, discussion? The motion is to approve March 19th, 2020, regular meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. March 24th, emergency meeting.
I move we approve March 24th, 2020, emergency meeting minutes.
Second.
Any questions or discussion on that motion? All those in favor approving March 24th, 2020, emergency meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. April 2nd, regular meeting minutes.
I'll move approval of the regular meeting minutes from Thursday, April 7th. A second, sorry.
I'll second that, just with a tiny correction, that in the first line, it says it was held on Thursday, April 2020. Just need to insert the date to make it complete. Any other questions or discussions on that? All those in favor approving the April 2nd, 2020, regular meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. April 7th, 2020.
I'll move approval of the emergency meeting from April 7th. There's a lot of background somewhere.
I'll second that.
Okay, somebody needs to put their phone on mute. You have a lot of background. Please put your phone on mute. Thank you. All right, the motion on the floor is to approve the April 7th, 2020, emergency meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. April 8th, 2020, special session.
I move we approve April 8th, 2020, special session minutes.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. We have any questions or discussion? All those in favor approving April 8th, 2020, special session minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. April 16th, regular meeting minutes.
I'll move approval of the regular meeting minutes for Thursday, April 16th.
Right. I'll second that, and I have two corrections on page four, the last item on number one. We, it didn't get put in the minutes, and hopefully we did that, was a motion to return to regular session. We were in fiduciary review board, and then we moved to return to regular session, so that's just one little thing. And then on page five, the first sentence, it said, "Motion by Mrs. Tab to accept High Mark of West Virginia HEAL insurance." So I understand what is supposed to be health. Would be nice if we could just use that kind of insurance, but we can't. So, any questions or discussion on that? The motion is to approve the April 16th, 2020, regular meeting minutes with noted corrections. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. April 21st, 2020, special session, lay the levy.
I move we approve April 21st, 2020, minutes, special session, lay a levy.
Second.
All right. The motion before us, is there any questions or discussion? Motion is to approve April 21st, 2020, special session, lay the levy minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last one, May 7th, 2020, regular session minutes.
I'll move approval of the May 7th, regular session meeting minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor approving the May 7th, 2020, regular session meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are down to approval of requisitions for May 21.
Okay, I move we approve requisitions for May 21st, 2020, in the amount of $37,747.
Second.
I just have a question on that. I know we're watching our budget really closely, and I'm wondering if these are critical at this time, and I don't know if this is something that has been bought with a grant. That's what I was trying to figure out, and I don't think I figured that out. Do you know, can anyone answer that question?
Is the sheriff on the phone still?
Sheriff, are you here? The requisitions are yours, therefore, it looks like vests and other tactical equipment?
Yeah, that's under grant.
That's what I thought.
All right, thank you, that's a good clarification. I'm happy to hear that clarification.
The requisitions go through Michelle, so she wouldn't have gotten it on the agenda if she hadn't.
It wouldn't have gotten past our gatekeeper, right? Okay, all right. All right, so the motion is to approve requisition, total amount $37,747. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, approval of accounts payable for May 14th.
I move we approve accounts payable for May 14th, 2020, in the amount of $187,070.85.
Second.
Okay, the motion is before us, do we have any questions, discussion? The motion is to approve 180, I'm sorry, accounts payable for May 14th, 2020, total amount $181,070.85. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of accounts payable for May 21st, 2020, I'll move that in total amount of $40,148.5.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motions before us, any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving the May 21st, 2020, accounts payable, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're down to manual checks for May 15th.
I move we approve manual checks for May 15th, 2020, in the amount of $274,028.78.
Second.
Okay, it's been, motion is before us, do we have any questions, discussion? All those in favor of approving May 15th, 2020, manual checks, say aye.
Aye.
And we are now on May 22nd, 2020, manual checks.
I'll move we approve manual checks for May 22nd, 2020, in the amount of $19,248.34.
I'll second that. We have any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving manual checks for May 22nd, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're down to payroll for May 14th.
I'll move approval of payroll for May 14th, in the amount of $260,175.29.
Okay, motion before us, approve payroll for May 14th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Administrator, are there any changes to the agenda?
I do not have any changes.
Okay. And now, do we have any public comment?
We do have one person who has provided written public comment. Additionally, if there are members of the public who would like to provide public comment, you can raise your hand. There's a little hand icon, and if you do that, I will unmute you, and you can make public comment if you would like to do that. So I'll give a few seconds for anyone who would like to make public comment. You can do that now. We are also still accepting public comment from, in writing, for anyone else who is interested. So while we're waiting, I will read the written public comment that we have received. It is from Mr. David Tab, and I will read his public comment. "I, David Tab, a lifelong resident/taxpayer, protest the Jefferson County Commission hindering residents/taxpayers from the recorded public comment. It is time to reopen the meetings to the public comment or stop making decisions that affect the resident/taxpayer of this county, such as appointments, purchases, projects, new and old, permits, studies, or any nonessential approvals and/or actions. It appears the JCC and the Jefferson County Administrator have yet released the FIOA of the 12 proposals/bids connected to the proposed courthouse complex. It appears the JCC has failed to sit properly for the approval of minutes since March 17th, 2020. If the JCC was not sitting properly to approve the minutes, then the commission was not proper to hold a meeting. The approval of manual checks is just wrong. If you have a budget, just stick to it." Public comment. "It appears the agenda packet has some 169 pages. Only three pages were posted. This is a false posting with documents to be approved. Agenda number one, Angie Banks Assessor. Within the agenda is a letter from the State Tax Department, addressed to Ms. Banks, clearly stating the transfer of assessment/valuation fund has not been approved. Any action taken by the assessor and/or the JCC will be premature." Agenda number three, Michelle Gordon, Finance Director. "I object to any approval or actions taken on any of these subject matters. If the budget funding was not used, it should not be spent elsewhere." Agenda number six, Pete Dordery. "No additional expenses should be made at this time until the county sees what the real effect to businesses and revenue will be. County Administrator reports, this has not been posted and should not have any action taken. The agenda packet has millions of dollars being flipped around from one account to another with no notice to the public. The whole packet should be placed on hold until all is posted at the courthouse and county commission meeting rooms, bulletin boards, according to West Virginia Code. The public reserves the right to call out the public officials to follow the required laws to ensure the constitutional rights of the public. The government's order to stay at home deprived the public of notice and comments without reimbursement provisions. This is affecting every resident and business owner to be responsible for all losses, all loses, including the government. It's hard to be safe with the current county commission. It's hard to be safe with the current county commission at this time. Have a nice day."
Okay.
And I don't see anyone who has raised their hand, who would like to make public comment. We do have about 20 people attending right now, as attendees. All right, okay. All right, so I don't have anyone who's volunteered to make public comment, so.
All right. Well, we'll move ahead. I assume our assessor is on the line and can take us through item number one on the agenda?
She is.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. The certificates of oath are ready to sign for the real property books and the personal property books. They will be at the Hunter House tomorrow. Sandy will have them available for you to sign. All the books have been completed, and all the taxes have been extended.
Okay, so there is no need for a motion, it's just for each one of us to come in and sign the certificate of oath for the real estate and personal property books, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So.
That's all five of us, or just you and me, Jane?
Yeah, I think it's all five of us.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there are seven pages that need to be signed.
Yeah.
Four real estate and three personal property book pages.
Yeah. So bring in your best writing pen. Thank you.
Does it have to be in blue or black?
It doesn't matter.
Good.
Thank you, Madam Assessor. You always keep the books in good shape. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
All right, you too. Well, that was a quick one. I know we're early, I don't know if Elizabeth Wheeler is on the phone or not, or on the webinar?
I see her. Elizabeth, are you there?
Elizabeth, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you there? Yes, ma'am. Are you there?
Okay.
All right.
I don't know how to do this.
Well, you're sounding much better right there.
You can't hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yes you can.
You can.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. All right. Do you need to announce the item? Should I?
Well, okay, I will. I will do that, just to keep everybody on the same page. We are agenda item number two. Elizabeth Wheeler is speaking. She's the Director for the Farmland Protection Board, and before us, we have approval of agricultural conservation easement. So Liz, will you explain what's going on here?
Yes, this is a little more complicated than my usual easements. We have a 280-acre farm property that's been in application since 2017 to the board, and it is a candidate for the Battlefield Protection Program of matching funding. And we submitted our application for that, and were approved in November of 2018. We've also, excuse me, one second, I have something in my throat. So we worked on creating the deed language for this easement, and began our discussions with the West Virginia shippo, which has to approve the deed, and with the Battlefield Protection Program. I won't go in through all the back and forth and details, but in essence, our experience was working with the federal program, which was undergoing a huge amount of turnover. The project was approved with staff, with the leadership staff, who then retired, and then we had a succession of acting directors, and I think at least five different staff people that I was trying to work with. And all of that caused a huge amount of delay, and time kept ticking along, and the landowner really needed to close by, really last year, due to financial pressures. And we had an agreement with them to close by, actually, March 30th of this year, and we're able to move that forward to March, I'm sorry, to May 30th. And I still haven't been able to get the deed approval after many resubmissions with the Battlefield Program. And so here we are with not much time left. The board, just as a fail-safe, decided to do a purchase with the Farmland Protection Board alone to purchase the whole property, easement on the whole property in portions. And so we have essentially a Plan A, which is the Battlefield Program, and Plan B, which is the Farmland Protection Program alone. And I'm still holding out a thread of hope that the Battlefield Program will come through, but we have to be realistic, because May 30th is really our contractual deadline. So what I'm asking you to do is to approve both easements, or both versions, but we're only going to do one. And we're prepared, we're fully prepared to complete either one. I would add that the Battlefield easement is, probably has a few items that need to be edited, but there's nothing substantial that affects the easement as a whole, with some language that the Battlefield folks prefer.
Well, having been on the board, I know how long and how hard Liz and others, board members, especially Rob Glenn, have worked on trying to get this easement completed and fulfill the deadline requirements, which were entirely reasonable when the property owners started the process. So I encourage my fellow board members to improve, even though this is an unusual situation, to approve the conservation easement on the property, and hopefully, if we have a small miracle, we'll get the Battlefield people to work with a day left on Friday to come to an agreement with us. If not, we'll go ahead and do the, we'll use easement option number two. So, that's what I have for discussion.
I'm fully prepared to work over the weekend, and I've told the Battlefield people that.
Okay.
Jane, this is Ralph, and this is a question for Liz. I'm assuming there is, but on option two, the funding is coming out of what account? Just so I know.
That's coming out of the Farmland Protection account, and we have the funds.
All right, that was my question. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the only question, this is Pacey, that was the only question I had too, so thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah. Well, and I knew that and didn't share it, and I just don't, you know, been working with this so long, it's, you know, it's just the way it is. And I believe Nathan has reviewed this, and that's all okay with him, too?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Commissioner Tab, the deed that she has given you regarding the Battlefield, because we don't really know what the Battlefield Protection Group's comments are gonna be coming back, we can't really finalize that one. And that's why she said there could be some changes, depending upon if they return and make some comments in the next few days. But I have reviewed the other one, and I believe that what Ms. Wheeler is asking you to do is to approve both versions, and then if they do happen to come through, then we would be able to finalize the one for the Battlefield Group. But she's just asking you, I think, to approve that one, as to like the substance of it. I think she could assure you that the major terms, as far as the price and that kind of thing, will not change.
That's correct.
Yeah. Well, I'll make the motion that the Jefferson County Commission approve the purchase by the Jefferson County Farmland Protection Board for one conservation easement on the property in Jefferson County owned by T.L. McGahey &amp; Sons Incorporated.
I'll second.
Do we have any more questions or discussion on this?
Yeah, quick thing, Jane, this is Josh. Liz, how much money is in that Homeland Protection account currently? Do you have any idea? Just out of curiosity?
We have a little under $4 million. At least half of that is already committed.
Okay, all right.
And we have several applications in our 2020 group that are very high-scoring and probably will get funded through NRCS.
All right, thanks, appreciate it.
Okay. All right, any more questions, discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Yay!
Thank you, folks, I appreciate your indulgence of this unusual predicament I'm in.
Well, it's not your fault, Liz, so thank you for all your hard work, and hopefully things will fall into place miraculously, but I'm not real hopeful about that, but maybe.
Well, you never know.
That would be wonderful if it did, yes, yes. Be positive.
Whatever we do, the farm will be protected.
Right, that's the important part. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, all right. Got it done.
Okay. Have a good evening.
Yeah, I was going, I was waiting for Josh Compton to go crazy on me.
Liz, you're still on.
There's always time for another one.
Okay. We are in item number three. We're early, is Michelle available?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, I have to talk, turn somebody down in my household, but you go ahead and get started, I'll be right back.
The first item that I have on the agenda is a review and approval of fiscal year 20 state budget revision, number four, for the coal severance fund. Back on June 19th of 2019, we approved, the commission approved $5,000 to be paid out of the coal severance fund for funding to CASA for the volunteer outreach program. They did not actually submit an invoice until fiscal year 20, so it was paid in fiscal year 20, and that budget revision is for $5,000, reducing the county commission's line item and increasing social services by $5,000. Any questions about that one?
No, I don't have any, but I'll make the motion to accept, to approve the budget revision number four.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay. All right, do we, any question, any more questions or discussions? Now the motion's been made. And the motion is to approve 2020 state budget revision number four for the coal And the motion is to approve 2020 state budget revision number four for the coal severance fund. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next budget revision I have is an internal budget revision for fiscal year 20. It was submitted by the assessor's office to transfer $200 from materials and supplies to her records book line item.
Okay.
About that? I figure we'll do all three budget, internal budget revisions and then we can do the motion all at one time.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Well, let me ask, on the document you sent us, the four, four or five pages, which page are we looking on here?
Well, they're not numbered, but it has IBR number three at the top. Right?
They're all bookmarked too, so if you have, at least I had a bookmark when I sent it, so. You click on your bookmarks, there should be a bookmark for IBR number three. The next one is internal budget revision number four, and this was submitted by the clerk of the county commission. She's transferring $96.51 from her salaries line item to her part-time line item. Any questions about that one?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I just want to understand. Just want to understand it. So she didn't have any, did she not have anything in her, in her part-time?
No, what happened was she had a full-time employee leave and she asked that full-time employee who was her payroll person to help train the new person and that person then came back part-time for just a few hours.
Okay, great. Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I was gonna motion, but we're gonna wait, okay.
And the last one, internal budget revision number five is a big one and it's kind of the one I do every year at the end of the year to kind of cover internally within departments, any overages that I saw. So in the county commission's line item, transferring $500 from health insurance to overtime to cover meetings and special meetings that were unanticipated. In the prosecuting attorney's office, primary transfer for him is from his salaries line items to his health insurance line item to cover position changes and things like that. And he was able to do most of that internally. He also had an unexpected expenditure for court costs. In IT, they had requested on October 31st, 2019, to make their full, the position that was approved to be full-time to have part of that paid for part-time staffing. That's that internal budget revision. Engineering requested to transfer $66 from materials and supplies to professional services to cover unexpected costs. Sheriff's Department is very similar to prosecuting attorney. They are transferring internally some money from their wages line item that they have from vacancy savings to cover health insurance changes that were received throughout the fiscal year. And then some other minor changes for postage and maintenance and equipment, materials and supplies, and then equipment. And the materials and supplies, that's something that they had budgeted for. It was just budgeted for in the wrong line item, that's all. Animal control is I needed to transfer $471 from professional services to cover some maintenance and repairs of equipment and an overage in their uniforms line item. And then the last one would be central garage, transferring $1,200 from materials and supplies to auto supplies of $1,200. Any question about those budget revisions?
Nope, I think you've explained them really well and I'll make the motion to approve internal budget revisions number three, four, and five as outlined by our financial director.
Second.
Okay. The motions before us, any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving for fiscal year 2020 internal budget revisions three, four, and five, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're to the state budget revisions.
Okay, and then the last two are state budget revisions, number four and number five. And then the state budget revision number four. The first portion of that, during the budget year, we typically budget a lump sum amount for health insurance increases in the county commission's line item. And then I allocate that throughout the fiscal year. So that first portion of that is for me to allocate health insurance increases to the departments that were budgeted for and that needed it. So the first portion of that is to reduce the county commission's health insurance line item by 79,000 and increase a number of other departments, decreasing a few others just to make sure that their health insurance is made whole for the increases that were received for fiscal year 20. Second portion of that is to record an adjustment to beginning fund balance for fiscal year 20 to correct correct it based on the ending fund balance for fiscal year 19. So that amount is 164,943. The offset of that would be transfers to capital outlay fund and that is our normal
Yeah.
Normal line item adjustment. The third part of that, which we may still need a budget revision for this in fiscal year 21, but we're reporting an adjustment for the BURB training grant that we received for Department of Homeland Security for our bovine emergency response program. And that training was actually canceled. I left the budget revision in here just in case they could squeeze it in by the end of the fiscal year, but I have a feeling that I'll have to redo that budget revision again in fiscal year 20. And that is 100% grant funded, or at least partially. The four, number four, we need to adjust our electricity and our other buildings based on the fiscal year 20 trend, increasing that line item by $17,147. And that would be offset by reducing our capital outlay fund transfers by $17,147. Number five would be similar to number four, adjusting our telephone expenditures in our courthouse line item based on the fiscal year 20 trends, increasing courthouse telephone by 26,978 and reducing transfers to capital outlay fund by that same amount. Number six is a request from the engineering department. They received a refund. Let's see, $4,500. And then they had to pay that amount out for professional services. They actually, I can't remember where they received the money from. They recorded an adjustment for appraisal reimbursement and expenditures and then they actually had to pay for that appraisal. So that's what the, it's completely offset by revenue. Number seven is to increase transfers to Bolivar for their hotel occupancy tax that the sheriff is now collecting and to increase hotel occupancy tax, a line item designated just for Bolivar by $50,000 to ensure that we're not over budget there. Number eight, the prosecuting attorney's office did receive a grant for additional part-time wages from Voca. So we are transferring, we're increasing part-time wages and benefits, increasing federal grant revenue and then reducing transfers to capital outlay fund by the grant match portion of $4,700. Number nine, the sheriff's office does provide security services to local banks, certain school, high schools and different organizations. So we're increasing their revenue for $32,000 and then another revenue for court fees for $3,100 and offsetting that by increasing his overtime line item and benefits associated with that overtime. So that one is budget neutral. For number 10, this is the one that we had talked about back in February. We're recording the wage and benefit shortfall in the clerk of the county commission's department due to employee turnaround and upcoming employee retirement, which was not discussed back in February. Since February, one long-term employee has indicated that she intends to retire on June 30th. So it originally was approved to be funded from contingency from emergency funding by, for $35,000. However, once we had that employee retire, that amount increased to $40,393. And I do recommend that we cover that out of our contingency for emergency funding only because she, there was no way to anticipate that we would also have a long-term employee retiring, that we would need to have her payout done in the current fiscal year.
Okay.
Number 11 is to correct state budget revision number three that I had approved a few months ago. I actually hit the wrong line item and I need to do a state budget revision for that to correct, it's just correcting the GL account from fund balance reserve, financial stabilization fund to fund balance contingency for emergencies and that one is budget neutral, just correcting my mistake.
These are a lot of journal entries, man. I remember making mistakes too in public accounting, so no shame in that at all. I mean, a lot more, trust me.
My father was an auditor and I said I'd never go into that business.
Let's be counters, they make, we make mistakes occasionally too. The 12th portion of this budget revision is to record position transfers between the general county fund, department number 406, and the assessors valuation fund department 407. Assessor has indicated in the face of the COVID-19 budget restrictions and, you know, to try to come up with some savings for the county, that she would like to transfer a position that was originally funded by the general fund to be funded by her assessors valuation fund to replace a vacancy. So it's not a full position amount, it's the difference between the higher salary position and the lower salary position. So she is actually returning $21,179 to the county from her assessors valuation fund. So that one is more than budget neutral, it's money for the county.
Thank you, Madam Assessor.
And then the last portion of that would be to record an estimated amount for the absentee ballot mailings that should be reimbursed by the state. This one is budget neutral. I'm increasing elections posters and supplies line items and increasing a state revenue line item because I believe that will be reimbursed by the state. Any questions or comments about any of the items included in state budget revision number four?
No, but that was a lot of work. Thank you.
Then state budget revision number five, which is this one is really addressing the COVID-19 revenue adjustments that I predict that we will need for fiscal year 20. When I reviewed all of the revenue accounts and looked at all of the revenue trends, I believe that the majority of the loss that we are going to expect can be covered internally through adjustments to increases to some of our revenue accounts and then decrease into one of our expenditure lineup. So I'll just go over those right now. And I did include a page in there. I'm not sure if you're able to see it. It's actually state budget revision journal entry. It's the detail line item that I usually include in all budget revisions. I wanted to point out that our wine and liquor tax, we typically only receive $30,000 to $40,000 annually for wine and liquor tax. And I was really surprised when I did a review of all of our revenue accounts to see that we've actually received $255,000 so far in year 20. So I contacted the state to confirm that that was actually our money and that they haven't made a mistake and they did confirm that the law changed in January of 2018 to allow money received from retailers outside of the city limits to now go to the county. So this was the first year that we saw any increase. There was no increase that we saw in fiscal year 19. I did not expect this at all. So I was able to increase that line item by $243,000. Building permit fees is trending significantly higher than we had originally budgeted for, so I was able to include an increase of $71,582 for that. Most of the other increases are just based on the trend for the current fiscal year. They're smaller amounts. I was really just trying to come up with numbers to offset our big number. I want to touch on table games revenue. Although we did not receive any revenue for that for April and May, by the end of March, we had already surpassed our fiscal year 20 budget based on the conservative budgeting that we had, projections that we had done for fiscal year 20. So a budget law, or actually budgetarily, we're not behind on table games revenue and we should actually increase that line item by $57,000. Now, if we go by our current year fiscal trend, it's actually, you know, a loss, but based on what we budgeted for, it's an increase. Does that make sense? Video lottery revenue in fiscal year 20, year-to-date revenue was $2,119,000. Budget was $2,768,000. I did revise that estimate. That was also trending much higher than we did before, but we lost revenue for that for April and May, and I believe that they're going to reopen in June. So I don't anticipate that we'll have a third month of lost revenue. Even so, for April and May's lost revenue, I do expect that we should have a decrease in our budgeted revenue of $522,585. And that is primarily offset by that increase that we did not expect to see for wine and liquor tax as well as building permit fees. Then the last remaining adjustment for all of those revenue adjustments and the COVID-19 revenue loss, based on our budgeted amount, not our trend, our trend loss is much higher. The transfers to capital outlay fund will need to decrease by almost $75,000 and that will balance that whole budget revision. Then the second portion of that would be our hotel occupancy tax. That is a 100% dedicated revenue source. It does not impact county general operating fund. I do expect that we'll see a loss of revenue of $186,000 for that. And that is 100% dedicated to others, the CBB, Parks and Rec, Arts and Humanities, and our Historic Landmarks Commission. So that one is budget neutral for us, but it's not budget neutral for Parks and Rec, CBB, or any of those other organizations. So they're gonna feel the burden of that one. Any questions about any of those budget revisions for fiscal year 20?
Now, remind me where our library funding comes in, in all this, or is it affected in any way? I had a question from a board member.
Fiscal year 20, no adjustments were made to any expenditure line items except for transfers to capital outlay fund to offset the loss that we're receiving for COVID-19 revenue.
Okay, so it would be, we're okay for this quarter, but next fiscal year may be a different story.
Right, and I'll go over next fiscal year after we finish the budget revisions.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear. I was understanding where we were correctly on that.
That wine and liquor tax, man, it surprised me.
Michelle, a question on that $100,000 that's floating around. You know, we're not gonna get it all, but where does that fit in the budget at all?
It is in a separate fund, all by itself, a special revenue fund, and we would need to use that to reimburse ourselves and other organizations throughout Jefferson County for any COVID-19 related expenditures.
I know we, Stephanie had talked last time and we, oh, this is my cat come to help me that wanted to set up like a grant program for those requests for that money. So I think we have some work to do on that because I know the municipalities are very interested in that funding too, so.
Yes, and Parks and Rec, they've had expenditures, ESA, they, everybody's had expenditures.
Okay. I'm gonna, does anyone else have questions for Michelle? I'm gonna move that we approve the fiscal year 2020 state budget revisions number four and five for the general county fund as presented. Any questions or discussions now? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and then the last portion that I have on my agenda item is to review fiscal year 21 revenue projections. And I did email you a handout earlier today. We will post that on the agenda packet for the next agenda packet so that it'll be at the end of the next agenda packet and people will be able to see it then. What I did was I developed, I looked at our current year revenue trends that have been affected by COVID-19. And I looked at our fiscal year 21 budgeted revenues. So for horse racing tax, for example, our original budget for fiscal year 21 was $10,500. However, for fiscal year 20, I believe because they had closed down for two months, the fiscal year 20 budget will be 6,000, or will be 7,131. I did not include a fiscal year 21 adjustment based on the, I have two portions of it. One would be what a recommended adjustment, and then the second portion would be potential adjustments if we have another wave of COVID-19 closures. So if you look in the gray column, this is the fiscal year 21 adjustments. This is a budget revision that I'll probably bring to you in July. So I don't have any adjustments for horse racing tax, horse racing tax. Now for wine and liquor tax, I did include $125,000 increase based on the law change and the revenue trend that I saw for fiscal year 20. So that will increase our fiscal year 21 budget from 130,000 to 155,000. Building permit fees, we originally budgeted 386,000 and I have increased that by 128,000. So I am anticipating that fiscal year 21 will end at 515,000 based on the trends that we have been seeing over the last few fiscal years, not just this current fiscal year. Other grants of $20,000 that relates to a grant that the sheriff's office has, I realize that we did not include the board of education match for the position that we have our school resource officer. Dale for fiscal year 20 actually trended lower than it normally has. So I did increase or decrease that by 15,000. Interest earned, looks like it has been trending higher in the last few fiscal years, so I increased that by 5,500. And table games revenue, our revised budget for fiscal year 20 is 536,000. I did take that revised budget number of 536,000 and I used our normal decrease of I think 9.1% to come up with a revised budget number of $529,400. So I believe we're going to need to decrease that by $35,000. Video lottery revenue, our revised budget for fiscal year 20 is $2.2 million. Our original budget for fiscal year 21 was $2.7 million. So that's about a $500,000 difference. So I kind of split the difference on that and I only decreased that one by $200,000. So I estimate that we should actually revise our fiscal year 21 budget to decrease that by $200,000 to 2.5 million. P-card rebates has been trending higher, so I increased that by $8,000. So the budget revision that I will bring to you in July will be in that gray column. And it actually is an increase to our fund balance of $27,998. Now, the blue column is what we could see if we have another COVID-19 closure where we have the casino closing down, where we have hotels closing down, where we have all of those restaurants and everything closing down for another couple of months. So if that does happen, I would expect that our hotel occupancy tax would decrease by almost $250,000. I would expect our federal grants and our state grants revenue to increase by $150,000 or $60,000 because we should get some expenditure reimbursements for things that we had not anticipated. Table games revenue and video lottery revenue would decrease a further $850,000 roughly. So the total decreases to revenue that I would expect us to see for fiscal year 21, if we have another COVID-related closure would be $890,000. Now, below that, I have a few things that I wanted to talk to you about. Our capital outlay fund transfers for fiscal year 20, I have not transferred all of our budgeted amounts to the capital outlay fund. I think I've only transferred $600,000 and that leaves $1,067,000 yet to be transferred. I don't plan to transfer that just in case something crazy happens in the remainder of fiscal year or in next fiscal year. I'm going to leave that in fund balance so that we have a cushion. So that if we do have some unanticipated expenditures or some unanticipated revenue loss, we do have a million dollars reserved in our fund balance to cover that. And that to me is our little savings bank. Fiscal year 21, we have 239,000 budgeted for capital outlay transfers. So that's a total of $1.3 million. Now, if we have no COVID-related incidents happening fiscal year 21, I can transfer that 1.3 million to the capital outlay fund. But as of right now, I don't plan to. I plan to leave that in fund balance so that we have a reserve. Go ahead.
So that's the potential impact if there's another wave. Are you saying we're in decent shape considering the current wave that occurred?
For fiscal year 20, because of the wine and liquor tax, I was able to balance the actual revenue loss that we received. And it's a budgeted revenue loss. Now, our actual revenue loss was much higher because our trend was higher.
Yes. So say for instance, if a constituent came to me or another commissioner, we could tell them, I don't want to say this, but because of the alcohol tax increases, we were offset more than we thought we would be.
That and we, my budgeted numbers for revenue for fiscal year 20 were very conservative. So I think that that conservative projection actually saved us and cushioned us because
As always, the old call of Jefferson County, right?
I'm trying.
All right, thanks a lot.
All right. And then the bottom portion of my handout talks about some of the potential adjustments that we could make in fiscal year 21 to balance that $890,000 loss, if we would have an $890,000 loss. So these would be my recommendations. And they're kind of continuing on what we're currently doing in fiscal year 20. So the first portion of that would be cut to transfers to other agencies. And that's because we have that dedicated revenue source of hotel occupancy tax. If we do see that $248,000 decrease, that does not impact us. It impacts those four agencies. The second portion of that, our insurance savings, our rate was actually much lower than we had expected. And we increased the employee portion based on kind of phasing them into what our neighboring communities are charging, having their employees pay. So we actually saw a savings of $60,000. I budgeted $115,000 and it only cost us about $55,000. So we have $60,000 there. I would still recommend that in fiscal year 20, because we don't know what's going to happen with COVID-19, I'll recommend that we continue to delay filling vacant, non-essential positions through January 1st of 2020. I believe that that would create a savings of about $75,000. And by non-essential, I mean the two positions that were, new positions that were approved in the budget for the county commission and the CAD position. The positions that were approved for the 911 center, I'm considering those essential. The positions that were approved for the sheriff's office and for ESA, I'm considering those essential and I'm not including those positions in my $75,000. Other positions that I would include in there would be if a department would have someone leave, they would be required to wait six months before filling that position. Number four, the assessor has indicated that she would continue her position adjustments from, that we just approved in the fiscal year 20 budget revisions, and she would carry those forward into fiscal year 21. So that also creates a savings of $21,000 for the general county fund. She also indicated to me that if we do have another COVID-19 related wave of closures, that she would also take some of her expenditures for travel, equipment, training, materials and supplies, and she would divert those to the assessors evaluations fund as well. So she's really doing her part to make sure that we're able to cover things here in the general fund. As mentioned earlier, the fifth portion of that would be, I'm not delaying my transfers to the capital outlay fund at this point. I plan to make that zero. There will be no transfers until we get to the end of the fiscal year and we've made it through any potential waves that may happen in fiscal year 21. I recommend that we continue with our overtime pay. That should be eliminated in fiscal year 21, that employees supervisors must have overtime pay. They cannot receive pay for overtime. It means that they must accept to take compensatory time off through January 1st of 2021 in lieu of overtime pay. And our policy already allows for that. And I believe that we've implemented that in fiscal year 20, we should continue that into fiscal year 21 to kind of lower our overtime costs. Then the last portion, if we needed to, and I do recommend that we continue this at least through the first half of the fiscal year, make sure that departments and elected officials know that there will be no discretionary spending for travel, training, materials and supplies and equipment, at least through January 1st of 2021, until we're sure that we're past any potential long-term COVID-19 closures. And I believe that we could generate about $170,000 in savings from that. And that would be, to me, the plan for balancing that $890,000 loss that would happen if we had another closure.
Michelle, I have a question. You know, we hear rumors about Congress passing money for municipalities and counties. I don't see any line items here that would be covered by something they would do. Do you have any thoughts on that? I'm assuming it would be far less than what our loss is here.
What, the only thing I included was federal and state grants. I included $210,000 in income for that.
Yeah, that's really hard to predict right now. I mean,
It is, but what I was, my point is horse racing's not going to get covered by
Right.
Yeah, that type thing. It looks like we're going to have to bear quite a bit of this. But in a good accounting, give you at least, give you an A minus anyway.
Oh, come on, Ramp. You know it's better than that.
And based on the fact that I don't plan to transfer any money to the capital outlay fund, my next recommendation is going to be that the projects that were approved in fiscal year 21, none of them will be allowed to move forward, at least until January the 1st of 2021, and we can reevaluate it. But for example, I've already spoken to the sheriff and let him know that he's not able to purchase any vehicles. I've already spoken to Alan Kaiser at our ESA office and let him know that in fiscal year 21, he's not going to be able to purchase any vehicles. The only projects that will continue, that are going to be paid are projects that are currently already in the works in fiscal year 20, or that we're required to do by law. For example, the impact fee.
Right.
That one would still need to, is required by law to do that one. So that's where we're going to be on our capital outlay fund. And I did include, the second page of that particular handout shows you what the capital outlay fund would look like without any transfers at all. Let's see, it reduces our fiscal year 20 transfers from 1.6 million to the 600,000 that have already transferred. And takes out all transfers to the capital outlay fund in fiscal year 21. And it would deplete the capital outlay fund down to 2.5 million if we allowed those
Yeah.
projects to move forward in fiscal year 21. And I don't recommend that we do that. I think that we've had a few years of vehicle replacements and a few years of HVAC replacements and repairs to buildings and things like that, that we can go one year without purchasing those vehicles and equipment and without any type of repairs that aren't emergency repairs.
Michelle, quick question. So the ESA and the sheriff vehicles, there's not an issue at all as far as like the current fleet? I mean, there's none breaking down on the road or anything like that? It's not causing a potential safety risk?
Well, the sheriff's office has, the last four or five fiscal years, they've actually been able to purchase vehicles every year. And he also has a big pot of, or not a big pot of money, but he's been very creative in finding grant funding to purchase vehicles. And he's been able to use money he receives from forfeiture funds to help outfit those vehicles and purchase more vehicles. So I think the sheriff's office is in a good position that, you know, hopefully we'll be okay in January. I can release and purchasing it, but you know, in the meantime, I think that he is in a good position. ESA, they were able to purchase a vehicle this year. They're a little more dire than the sheriff's offices. But unfortunately, I feel like they're just going to have to wait a year on the vehicles, just the vehicles.
Well, and if something dire happens, we can bring it back and, you know, for an ESA vehicle, we can bring it back and go in our emergency fund if we have to, if it's that critical.
That's definitely one of the most essential services in the county. I mean, I just want to make sure ESA, I understand the sheriff. Some of those vehicles that ESA are, I drove one of them and it didn't go very fast when you put the accelerator.
Is that Nathan's dog?
My dog.
Didn't like my comment, I guess.
My dog has been unfairly blamed around here. Of course, it usually is my dog.
I'm sorry, I slandered your dog there. Okay.
I think it's a prudent thing to do. I mean, you know, if it gets to the point where they get into an emergency situation and they absolutely have to have a vehicle, then we can reconsider it at that point. But for now, I think it's the only thing we can do.
I just want a consensus of everybody, you know, okay with all these projections and Michelle's adjustments, they all make sense to me. I think it's very wise to look, be this forward-looking and knowing that we may have additional expenses in the fall. I don't even know if we're really out of the woods right yet. But anyone else have any comments?
Well, I just think, I'd just like to say that I'm certainly not going to second guess her. She's brought us to this point and she has been spot-on with every prediction and analysis that she has done. And I think all this makes perfect sense and I certainly am in agreement with it.
Okay.
I'm in agreement also, but I also agree with you. We have a who knows what the next three months are going to bring, but that's all you can say about it.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Well, and I'm just so happy to know that we're in a better position than I thought we were. And, you know, I don't advocate for heavy drinking, but I'm glad some of it's occurred.
I know, it really surprised me. And then I did, in relation to the fiscal year 21 budget, I'm also getting a lot of questions from employees about merit increases and COLAs for next fiscal year. They are included in the budget and I think it would be wise to continue those and not cut those for fiscal year 21. I think, I believe, as long as we continue to track of reducing discretionary spending for travel and training and all of those other line items. Additionally, employees, insurance premiums, the employee portion of that is increasing July the 1st. And if we, that COLA and their merit increases are kind of really to kind of help offset that increase for them. It's already included in the budget and I believe that if we do have another COVID-19 related event, we will be able to balance, rebalance the budget by other expenditure cuts. And I just want to make sure that we're not glossing over that and that everybody's still okay with us including those merit increases and the COLA in for July the 1st. okay with us including those merit increases and the COLA in for July the 1st.
Michelle, this is Josh. I'm going to play devil's advocate here before anybody else chimes in. So we saw the unemployment numbers come out today. There's 39 million people on unemployment. I'm going to have a real problem talking to constituents approving merit increases and cost of living adjustments, knowing many of them are unemployed right now. I don't I don't think that's a prudent thing to be doing. It's not that I don't benefit. I greatly am happy with the work that the county employees have done and so forth. Just as a county commissioner, I have a problem going back to my constituents when that many people are unemployed, out of jobs, approving something like this. But that's my opinion, so.
I appreciate that.
Well, I'm I'm definitely in favor of keeping them as planned. I I know lots of our employees have gone above and beyond their normal job description during this time and will continue to do so. And they are also, you know, meeting with public and being exposed in some ways, even though we're doing everything we can to protect everyone. So I don't think this is the time to pull back if there is if realistically we can afford it, and it looks like it right now. So I'm fine with going ahead as planned.
Commissioner Tab, one question for you. I mean, Parks and Rec is suffering greatly right now, which significantly benefits lots of the community. There's a large chunk of money that could be redirected to Parks and Rec to help them out and county residents as far as the youth for something like that. So I just want to chime in, there is other opportunities that will benefit the community in hard times that can be used.
Well, I can I can agree with that, and I know that we're going to have to come up with something for Parks and Rec because I know they've been been hit hard. But I I think our employees are on the front line, and I don't think this is a time to draw back our support for them. And merit increases are earned. They're not gifts. So not everybody's going to get a merit increase.
Yeah, I agree with you. I agree with Jane. I think it's important to continue if we can do it, if we have the funds available to be able to do it. And certainly agree that these merit increases are are earned. They're not given. They're they're earned because of the hard work, and these folks are always on the front line. And and they've all stepped up, and they've all been very flexible. And they're doing such good jobs, and I just can't see pulling back on our promise to them for merit increases unless we do not have the funds to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll just say that one last thing. I mean, we technically do not have the funds because there are other county departments that benefit county residents greatly that are hurting very bad right now. So I don't I'm not actually agreeing that we do have the funds to do this. And I agree totally with Commissioner Nolan that we all our county employees do a great job and work very hard. Just as the Parks and Rec board member or liaison, they are hurting very bad right now. The county currently has hardly anything to do for our youth. So that money could be very well used at Parks and Rec because they're going to take a big hit on program revenue also this year, not just hotel motel taxes.
Commissioner Compton, if I if I could just point out that I still have $1 million in fund balance that I am not transferring to the capital outlay fund. And our financial policy says that our fund balance should only be used for one-time expenditures. It can't be used for operating expenditures. So to me, one-time help to Parks and Rec would be a good use of that diversion of $1 million that I'm not going to transfer to the capital outlay fund. So I feel like we have a good reserve available that if Parks and Rec or another agency came to us and said, I need help, we have money available.
That's fine. That's good to hear because, I mean, that's a main entity that directly benefits the youth of the county. So if that's the case, that's wonderful.
Well, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Patsy.
I just want to make a point that every organization is hurting now. You know, look at the senior center. They have not been able to provide the the meals that they were able to provide before because the the racetrack, the casino, has donated a lot of that food. And so they haven't been able to provide to seniors what they were able to provide prior to COVID. And and it's so it's I understand children. I also understand seniors. I understand every single agency out there that suffered because of this. Are we able are we going to be able to fund all of them? If we can't, which ones? How are we going to choose? And and so I think you just open a whole can of worms when you start that, and nobody feels any worse than I do over what has been lost as a result of this. You know, the hotels, the private business owners, people who've gone out of business because of this. And so, you know, it's not just Parks and Recs that suffered. It's every agency and all the small businesses that have really struggled as a result of of the having to close down.
Commissioner Tab, can I respond to that real quick?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Nolan, what will you tell all the furloughed county employees that have worked at the casino who have been furloughed for over two months now that were giving their taxpayer dollars as cost of living adjustments and merit increases while they're furloughed on unemployment? I just I don't understand how that is rationalized.
Well, it's rationalized because they're merit increases and they were budgeted prior to any COVID. And again, it depends on whether or not the funds are going to be available, Josh. It's a, you know, we can't fund every single agency. We can't, we can't, we can't. It's unfortunate that people were furloughed, but we can't help them because the funds are not there to be able to do that. And that's not even a rational thought, in my opinion.
I mean, the the private sector, just because we're a government entity funded by taxpayers, if you look at the private sector, they're cutting these types of things across the board across the country. So the fact that we are not, just because we're not in the private sector, we're funded by taxpayers, is outrageous to me. And I'm not going to agree to it. I'm sorry. I bet the county employees do a great job, just I don't see how you do that in this time when there's 39 million Americans unemployed.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I'm going to go back to my original basic question. Is everybody get the feeling that Josh is not in agreement with Michelle's projections and suggested cuts and how we can move forward? Caleb, I haven't heard anything from you. What are your thoughts?
Well, it's really tough. I understand where Josh is coming from on this. And it's it's we did make this promise to our employees during the budget, and I understand that the only way I would accept taking that away is if we were helping another agency. But to my knowledge, none of them have even come to us and asked for help yet. And as Michelle pointed out, we would have the funds if they did. So it's a I guess I'm fine with how she presented it.
Okay, and and that's, I think, a good point. And of course, nobody knows yet. They they think the COVID situation is so fluid, it's hard to come forward with plans to move forward when you don't know what what the restrictions will be within the next two weeks, let alone the next three months for the summer. So but I hope Parks and Recs and the other agencies that are hurting for funding can come up with some something that would benefit everyone, and we'll work with them to make it the best we can. So I believe there's a consensus that this is a good plan to move forward on. Everybody, yes, yes, you're right. I didn't ask for a vote, but since it really wasn't, well, it does.
The majority, but there's not a unanimous consensus.
Yes, correct. The consensus is four to one to move forward with these this plan, budgeting plan that Michelle has presented. Do we have any more comments on this subject? If not, we thank you, Michelle, for all your hard work and just getting your mind wrapped around all this. I just I know this is your field and you're into it, but my goodness, I really appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Well done.
Yes. All right, we are down to Mr. Cochran. Hello.
And I and could I just say that I know that Michelle has been working very hard throughout all the myriad changes of the, you know, just the mind-boggling things that have happened over the past few weeks with regard to funding and accounting. So I would just also say that I really appreciate her work. As far as my list goes, I'm going to just pass on everything. So that's the fastest that I've ever done. So you all are training me. These these video meetings are working wonders.
All right. Thank you so much. You've almost got us back on schedule.
I think it's the threat of the mute button and my my superior skill at using it.
Okay.
It is. It's pretty frightening for her to have that much power, Commissioners. And I think that you should consider, like, having someone responsible like Sandy sit with her and be in control of the mute button.
Okay.
She's overrun with power here.
Yeah, we could all get carried away. Yeah. Um, let's see, I'm at item number agenda item number five, Nikki Painter with the elections. Nikki, are you there?
Instead of Nikki, we're going to have the county clerk herself, and she is here.
Oh, okay, great. Yeah.
Good evening, Commissioner Tab. We would like to re can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, we would like to request the commission's approval for a polling place location change. We had precinct 14, Camp Hill Wesley Church. They decided not to let us use their building for the primary election, and so we would like to move it to the Harper's Ferry Middle School. Please note that we've already put legal ads out and published notices to all the affected voters.
Okay. Well, then I'm going to move the polling place location change as presented, and that's precinct 14, usually held at Camp Hill Wesley Church, will be moved to Harper's Ferry Middle School. Okay, motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye. 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 Opposed? Motion carries. And go ahead.
I have one more item, and if Stephanie wants to chime in or it deals with the courthouse closure on election night, usually we have that open to the public, but with the concern for COVID-19 and social distancing, and we just don't have the staff to monitor that. And we'd like to livestream the room that everything comes into and have that available to the public. And as soon as results come in, we would post it to the Secretary of State website and our county clerk website as well.
Yeah.
So so and in in my report, I have a policy, and I sent that to you earlier today, and we're talking about opening but still limiting access. And if any of you have been there, and most of you have been on election night, it's pretty crowded, especially when when the, you know, when the newest numbers from a precinct are posted, everyone's kind of crowding around. I mean, you can you can barely fit in there. I have been working with and I that policy hasn't been approved, so we'll discuss it. But we have been working on IT, on working on an alternative so that we could livestream the results, so people could still watch the results as they come in. And they do post them online. In fact, I myself have been in the courthouse, and people couldn't get next to the results that were posted. And I was looking at it on my phone, and people asked me, how are you getting that? And I said, oh, it's on our website. So we are working with the IT department to make it, you know, as close as possible to being there. But there are a lot of people that come to the courthouse on election night, and I mean, it's it's standing room only. It's very tight in there on most election nights. So it consistent with the policy that we're going to go over, we may want to, and I know that people really like to come to the courthouse. It is really exciting to watch those results come in. But you may want to consider limiting that for this election.
Okay, so is it proper form for us to hold on? My cat is visiting me. If you've got, she likes to help me when I work at the computer.
It's a good thing that cats don't bark, Commissioner Tab.
Oh, anyway, I'll get her moved here in a minute. So is it proper for us to go ahead and make this motion to close the courthouse to the public on election night and and then go ahead and work on all the other buildings and so forth with your guidelines for the county? I just think it'd be good to get it out there so people understand what we're doing and why. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but.
Can we legally close the courthouse?
I mean, on election day, the courthouse is closed.
Well, I mean, for this purpose, though, I mean, can we legally close it for the election results purpose?
It's already closed because of the holiday. I don't know that there's anything that says that that the courthouse has to be open on election night. I think that we have to provide transparency and show so we would have cameras that would, you know, show what's going on inside the courthouse. But if I find out something different from the Secretary of State, I I will alert the commission immediately, but I'm not aware of any restriction that would require us to have the courthouse open.
So does that mean it would be I'm sorry. Does that mean it would also be closed, like commissioners sort of oversee, you know, I guess oversight?
I would.
What who does it? Who is it that is going to be kept from being into the in the courthouse?
I would say that it's it would be the public. If commissioners wanted to come, I would view them as as staff. So I think that the commission could come in. And again, we're not just going to, like, close the courthouse. We're going to have cameras so people can actually look and see what's going on inside the courthouse. But I think that the commission would be able to come in because is your election, the county clerk carries out the election on your behalf, but it is the county commission that's the Board of Counselors and responsible for ensuring that the election is proper. So I do think that commissioners could come in if they wanted to.
Okay.
I guess there are two groups that may have. I don't think it'd be normally at a primary, but occasionally a party or a candidate will have an attorney be there. And also, you have the press. Sometimes the radio station used to set up right in the courthouse. I don't I I don't care if they're there or not, but I just bring that up.
Wouldn't they have access to the same information if you were live streaming it, though?
What if they don't have internet?
It's hard for me to imagine a press or an attorney that doesn't have internet.
I mean, I speaking to county residents, though, I mean, a lot of the county has lackluster internet connections. I just want to make sure we're not disenfranchising some county residents that may or may not want to be part of the election results. I mean, is there there's no possibility of, like, limiting the number of people in there and slowly transferring in and out or something like that?
Maybe require masks or something. You know, I really, I really understand, and I, you know, this is a real problem. It's a real dilemma because, you know, I I feel like I kind of hate to do it, but I understand why. And I but, you know, I don't know if we can, I don't know what the solution is, but I really don't like closing it, but I completely understand why. And and I understand it would be completely closed, but I know, I wish there were an easy solution, but there isn't. And I certainly want to keep everybody safe. And I certainly want to keep everybody safe, but maybe even limit the number of people in there at a time. I don't know what the solution is.
The restaurant's at 50% occupancy. I mean, is there any way we could like do by square footage? I mean, and then make the case like only about three people can actually come in there based on the square footage thing. I just want to be able to go back to tell people, this is what's going on. Yeah, we can open it, but only three people at a time. And then it's just, that's crazy.
I think that number three is probably pretty close to what you could fit in there. It's the hallway. All of the other offices are actually occupied by election workers on election night. So even the county, the meeting room there, the old John Brown courtroom, that is occupied by poll workers and equipment. So the way, where people stand is actually in the physical hallway at the, in the, in the courthouse. That's where most people stand. And I mean, it is, I've been there on almost every election and it is packed really tight. So it is, I mean, we could, if you wanted to do that, I could have maintenance measure the square footage and we could figure out what the occupancy of that space would be. And then if we reduce the capacity, what, who would be allowed in? I'm just kind of sitting here thinking off the top of my head, you know, if, if we could find a way to distance it, we could allow, you know, but then the press is going to be upset, but we could allow one person from the press and then a representative from each of the parties, if you want, but then there are nonpartisan elections as well on the ballot, a lot of nonpartisan elections right now. So.
And those are, those are all policy questions and that's, you know, stuff for you all to decide, not me. But, you know, I'd be happy to look and if, see if there's specific legal requirements for that particular night. So we could, you know, I could do that for you. Everything else is sort of your policy decision.
My concern is that, my concern is that if, if, I think if it were, if you had a camera in there and, you know, people could see what was going on inside on a, some kind of a computer, teleprompter, television, whatever. I think it would, it would probably make, it would just be more transparent. People would feel like they weren't being excluded. But I think it's going to have to be, you know, well covered so that people aren't thinking, well, there's something going on behind the scenes because you know they'll think that.
Well, is there any, this thought just came to me and it just might be a terrible idea to put the, a big screen monitor outside in the, on the, you know, underneath the porch part of it. At least people could socially distance themselves outside to a degree. And, you know, but that may not be doable. I do think we need to give this some more thought because I really, you know, you think of it, I thought of it as a tradition. But it is also, you know, to understand a local election, I think it's pretty exciting to go to the courthouse. You certainly understand the integrity of the ballot box and how the ballots are handled and so forth. So I think that's especially with this one, with all the absentee voting and so forth. If we could be more creative, but still keep everyone safe. I think it, I'd like to give it some more thought is what I'm saying.
So I can work with IT. I had, actually had that thought that we could, that we could maybe put people upstairs in the bigger courtroom or outside or something like that. At first I thought about the civic center, which is a really big space. Maybe we could put the feed in there. But they're being used as a polling place, so I don't think that that will work. But I'll look into it with IT to see if there's a way that we can broadcast it outside. I think, I, I feel like we've done that before, but.
We have.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And Jackie, do you have any other thoughts?
Um, I mean, I've had the, all the same thoughts that you, that you have had. And that's why I said, I think I want you all to make the decision on it. But I do want to let you all know some numbers. I'm very proud of my staff. They've been working very hard on these absentee ballots. Normally it's a couple hundred per election. And we've received and mailed out 7,788 absentee ballots.
Wow.
And we have received back 3,334 ballots have been returned to us. So that's a lot of work.
Yes.
And, and my staff has been wonderful and I feel very blessed to work with each and every one of them.
Yeah, well, thank you for that update. That is a huge number of absentee ballots to handle. And this will be interesting when we do canvassing too. I just thought of that.
Oh, I've been thinking about that. That's
Oh, boy, we, we might have to move up into the big, where the judge won't get into the big courthouse courtroom to do canvassing, just stay six feet apart. I don't know. We'll figure that out too. Well, let's get the election done first.
Well, let me ask, the election's a few weeks away, but early voting is next Wednesday? Do we need to make any decisions for next Wednesday?
So some of that is in the, in the guidelines that I'm going to present to you concerning how we're going to process early voters. And then, you know, depending upon what the governor may do. The whole policy could change tomorrow, but based on the governor's guidance. So, but I will address some of that with how processing early voters and what we're going to make or not make them do is addressed in the policy.
Okay. Everybody okay with moving on ahead with more information to follow on how election night and so forth will happen?
I'm fine with that, yes.
Okay, thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
I'm moving on to agenda item number six. The sheriff, are you there?
Yes, I am. Commissioner DeBiff, since my responsibility in part is providing security at the courthouse and so on as well. I think Commissioner Compton raised a point, and I think one of the things maybe you all can consider with the IT people is, is also you have access to the TV channel. Maybe that same feed could go through the TV channel. So people who say they don't have good internet access might have the ability if they're on cable. That would at least be another area where they could get information from there as well. I, I can also tell you there are, I've been with the health department and Judge Hammer in the courtroom. And even there, there's significant limitations. So I don't think having people upstairs with a big screen is probably going to work, work very well either. But I'll, I'll leave that for you all to figure out going forward. At least the TV option may be something that, that is workable.
Yeah.
But anyhow, on the, on the specifics of what, what I'm on the agenda for tonight. Every year, we obviously work on trying to provide courthouse security. This year, the main focus of that is on, on additional and new cameras. We, you know, have camera issues all the time and, and what we can see and how well we can see. And, and we've been working on that. And so that's the, that and handicapped accessible metal, metal detectors. Right now, the metal detector system that we have really aren't sufficient. So if someone's in a wheelchair or something like that, they're really not wide enough to properly come in. Plus the ones that we have aren't working all that well. They're older and so on as well. So anyhow, the grant proposal is, is there and what it is, and given the fiscal issue, and I'm sure the fiscal issue every other county is facing as well. We're asking for the grant to be approved without a local, a local county match. So I'm happy to answer any other questions you have, but that's the, the basics of the court security grant. So I would ask the commission to approve the grant and authorize the president to sign the grant request.
Okay. My, my only question is you're getting three new ADA walkthrough metal detectors. And so that would be.
That would allow the three courthouse doors that the public enters would, would all have a new ADA compliant metal detector.
Okay, I got you. I got you. All right. Well, I'll make the motion that the commission approve the court security grant request by the sheriff and authorize the commission president to sign the grant request.
Second.
You have any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The, the next item or the next two items, whichever, however you want to do it, are to fill vacancies in the rank of corporal. I'm based on the, the testing approved by civil service. We have two persons, Deputy First Class Alan Thomas and Deputy First Class Scott Demery. Both are, are, were the, were the two eligible to be promoted. And as it was the last time, that would change their salary by $2,299.22 per year. And this is not a, a budget request that needs any adjustment in the budget. It will be handled with the, with the budget as it exists for my office. So I'd, I'd, I'd request that you approve both Alan Thomas and Scott Demery for the position of corporal. The effective date of that would be June the ninth of 2020.
Well, I'll move that we, the commission approve Deputy Thomas and Deputy Demery be promoted to corporal effective June ninth, 2020, and that their compensation be increased by $2,299.22.
Second.
Okay, we have any questions or discussion on the motion?
There are no further, I can just tell you commissioners, there's no further promotions expected during my tenure.
Yeah, okay. Well, the motion before us is to approve the promotion to corporal of Alan Thomas and Scott Demery with additional compensation of $2,299.22. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Sheriff.
Thank you.
All right. We are now at county administrator reports.
Okay. And I'm also going to share my screen as well. Do you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And does it say COVID-19 return to work policy?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right.
Do Josh and Caleb have that document?
Yeah, I can, yeah, I got it here too.
Okay, Caleb?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, all right, just checking.
Okay, so this is a, a first pass, of course, subject to your approval and any changes you want to make on how we're going to come back to work. I did disseminate it earlier today to department heads and elected officials, and I did get some feedback. And I made a few changes based on that feedback. One change that I didn't put in there, that I should have put in from the very beginning is that I have requested that the county clerk be allowed to limit her services at her discretion, the services that her office provides. And the reason, until the primary election is over, and the reason for that is that she needs all of her staff to basically run what is in effect two elections, a mail-in election and then the regular, you know, in-person voting. So while she may be open, she may have to limit the services that are available because all of her staff or almost all of her staff is involved in processing that election. So I did add that change in there. And it should have been in from the very beginning. And I did discuss that I was going to put that in there with her. She's not saying that she won't provide any of the services, but you know, she has to have the ability, I feel, to limit. Because if, if you go into the county clerk's office, they're just surrounded by, by paper from the ballots.
I don't, did you say till after the election? I wonder if it needs to be a little longer. I, I, until we canvass? I don't know.
Yes, I'm sorry. It's, I have it until after the election is certified.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, I apologize for that. It was, so after the election is certified, then she could resume, you know, normal, what it, what would be normal under this policy that we're going to talk about.
Okay, gotcha.
I, I need to say this just because I got a call. I had a lady call and she was, I, I should say she lives in my development. That's why she called me. But her husband had died and she had contacted our probate office here. Got, got some information and then before she could get back to him, the, the stepdaughter had got herself qualified over in Harrison County. So she was mad at me why she couldn't get qualified here before. I, I just throw that out there. There's, there's some people that do need services in the probate office. Now I'll just throw it out because I got called about it.
Okay. All right, so I'm just going to walk you through the policy. As it's written now, of course, all of it is subject to changing, scrap the whole thing, start over again. I just wanted to give us kind of a starting place. So the first thing is screening for employees for symptoms of COVID-19. And actually, this, as I wrote this section, it kind of turned into employees and members of the public. So I need to change.
Oh, yeah, the heading.
So the, what is contained here is basically we're going to, it gives us the authority to monitor employees. It does not require it for symptoms of COVID-19 to screen them. These questions are directly from the DHR guidelines. And they're the screening questions that they recommend. If an employee answers yes to any of the screening questions, they would be asked, we would send them home and urge them to contact a medical provider. And employees could return to work once their symptoms have inside, have subsided. And employees who are sent home should be offered remote work when feasible. So if an employee is, you know, exhibiting symptoms but they're still able to work, we would provide them the opportunity to do remote work. And we still have some of our expanded leave as well that they could take advantage of. So one of the questions I have that is not addressed in here is that if you send an employee home, did you want to place, place them on administrative, administrative leave with pay? Or did you want to have them just take advantage of the expanded leave opportunities that are available? That through the new federal statutes? Because the federal statute does provide for distance leave, health leave that employees can be provided, and that's in addition to their already existing leave banks. Well, some employees have already tapped into that for distance leave, but many employees have that distance leave still available to them. The other option is to require employees to exhaust the bank from the federal law and then place them on administrative leave with pay if possible, if needed. So that's your first kind of question that's not addressed in here is how do you want, you know, A, do you want employees screened? And B, if you do, and we send them home, how do you want their leave to be handled?
Stephanie, I know the sheriff is getting the temperature things for people coming into the courthouse. We, do you have one as the supervisor?
I don't have one. Some of our offices have them and some of them don't. So Jeff is already monitoring people at 911 or anyone who comes into that building because the dispatchers are in such close quarters. So he is already monitoring them and he has the ability to do that. The buildings that we would have to cover would be. Um, the buildings that we would have to cover would be um basically the Mason Building, that's the only building that in our building. Um, but we're in such close quarters here and if you, maybe I should start. Maybe I should tell you that this policy further down encourages the continuation of teleworking where available and when feasible. So if employees can't telework, they would be required to return to work. But if there are still teleworking opportunities, this policy encourages department heads and elected officials to take advantage of those teleworking slash remote working opportunities. So it continues the social distancing. Um, there are lots of employees who have been able to work remotely from home and are still being productive. So um that further down and under the social distancing section, I will say that employees um are still provided the opportunity to work remotely if possible. And it doesn't require remote work, it just provides the option for employees or supervisors, elected officials, department heads to provide that opportunity. Um, so the only, the only building that does not have a thermometer right now is the Mason Building, which is where engineering is.
Right.
Because the sheriff is going to be taking care of, or the bailiffs will be taking care of the other courthouse, the other two large buildings we have, which is the courthouse and um shoot, the judicial.
Safe margin.
Sorry, yes.
This is the sheriff, I I do have infrared thermometers for all the courthouse doors. Um, you know, circuit clerks area, the front door, the main courthouse, the other. Uh, I do have it for my office and and I have one that if you need it, uh, you can have it uh used as well for for your office.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Sheriff, I have a, I noticed somebody the other day standing in front of the probation office. How are they working things these days? I, it, the door was locked, but I, they were trying to get in, so I don't know.
Oh, I mean, they're not, they're not seeing people in their offices, I understand it.
All right.
And having been a probation officer, I rarely saw people in my office uh when I was doing that kind of work.
Do you just want to go through the policy and then go back to the, you want me to go through the whole policy and come back? Or how did you want to handle this?
That's a really hard decision. I don't know what the best, what the best way to handle that is. That that's a, you know, I've been sitting here thinking about that and I just don't know uh the best way to handle it, so maybe we need to go through the policy and maybe we'll have revelations somewhere down the down the path.
Yeah.
So first policy is, and again, this policy right now does not require that employees are screened. However, uh, and I have been in contact with Judge Hammer and I do have the draft order that he's planting on, planning on entering. He does require people to be screened as they come into the courthouse. And the reason that he's doing that is because we will have jurors, maybe, um, depending on, beginning on June fifteenth. And so his rationale is that we are compelling jurors to come here. There are penalties if you do not come. And so he wants to keep them safe. So his order will require anyone who's coming into the courthouse to be screened, uh, both employees and uh and the public.
And Stephanie, does that include, well, I get, I know the clerk wants limited access to her office um until the election is complete. But would that, is that anyone that comes through that first metal detector, whether they go upstairs or if they go into the clerk's area?
Yes.
Okay.
And so we had a discussion about early voters because um, you know, whether or not we were going to require them to A, go through the screening and then there's a section that addresses facial coverings. Um, I think Judge Hammer wanted to require those. Um, he's in, he's inclined to require those, but I, I think the Secretary of State does not agree
Right.
with that. Um, I don't know that the county commission has the authority to require those coverings for for early voting. Uh, but I think the governor could require them. Um, so, and he is apparently going to be making some decisions tomorrow about facial coverings in the Eastern Panhandle or not. I don't, I mean, I don't really know, but there are apparently going to be some decisions made about the Eastern Panhandle tomorrow. If I understand his press conference correctly and if I understand some of the um correspondence that I've received from the state public information officer. So right now, the way that I have written the policy, people who are there for the sole purpose of early voting do not have to be screened and they do not have, they will be encouraged to wear a facial covering, but they do not have to wear facial covering.
Right.
So that is how I have written it and I asked Judge Hammer to change his order to reflect just the exemption for early voting. Because I don't want to run into a situation where someone came in and wanted to vote and we said, please wear this mask. And they said, I don't want to wear a mask and they were turned away and then the allegation is that we infringed with their right to vote. Um, so that is, that is why I've written the policy the way that it is and I asked Judge Hammer to insert that into his order. Um, we had, I had, I I think the the clerk had mentioned on a call and maybe we had an idea of having curbside voting, but the Secretary of State, you know, if someone had answered yes to any of the screening questions or refused to wear a mask, we had them vote curbside, the Secretary of State said that that won't fly. That it's that the voting is only allowed um when the polling place is not accessible for for um reason of handicap. So they, there were some counties that were only going to do curbside voting and the the Secretary of State said they could not do that. So.
Does, does the judge's order cover the magistrate court too?
It does, yes.
Yeah.
So he, yes, he has entered an order and I tried to make them, um, I tried to follow it as much as I could. Um, so I kind of started out with his order and then added some, you know, some to that 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 impacts only our office. Um, so you'll see, um, remember, right now it says, members of the public. So right now I do have members of the public who answer yes to any of the screening questions may be denied access to the buildings. However, every attempt should be made to assist individuals who are denied access to the buildings um, complete their business with the county.
Right.
Um, and then further down, individuals whose sole purpose for seeking entry into the courthouse is to participate in early voting will not be subject to health screening procedures outlined in this paragraph.
Okay.
Um, so that's what it says right now. So, I mean, take notes or if you see something you want to change, let me know and we can discuss it now or we can go through the whole thing. I don't really.
I I think it would be very important to bold or make it stand out more that individuals that are there to participate in early voting will not be subject to the health screening procedures, just to make sure somebody doesn't start reading this document and get wound up or, you know, get upset for some reason and then not see that part part of it and know, for whatever reason, that they can come in and early vote.
Yeah, I I like that idea.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, did you see the change that I made on your screen?
Yes, that was awesome.
I did, that's pretty cool.
I really, I gotta tell you, I really like meeting this way for for purposes of reviewing. Um, all right, so that's the first section, basically has to do with health screening coming into the courthouse and other buildings. Um, the next, I don't think there's anything that should be too controversial here. It's just basically we're asking people to, we're asking um to, to use hand sanitizer. Um, you know, we're, to the extent possible, we're trying to provide those at entrances. Hand sanitizer is in scarce supply right now, but we do have some. Um, we have been able to get a few more of the um the little hand sanitizing machines to place at different entrances. So basically this just um asks people to sanitize their hands when they enter and encourages employees to wash their hands frequently throughout the day.
Yeah.
Stephanie, this is kind of a small minute detail.
Mm-hmm.
Seventy percent alcohol CDC recommendation or sixty percent?
It's actually seventy percent and the sanitizer that we have is seventy percent, so maybe we should change that.
Okay.
Because it is, you're right, it's seventy percent.
If someone's very detail oriented, and I am not, I just happen to know that because my wife's all over that.
Okay.
I was using Tito's actually, and believe it or not, it wasn't working, so.
Um, okay, so the first thing is just basically, uh, you know, cover your mouth and nose when you sneeze. The next deals with the face coverings. Um, it, employees are strongly encouraged to wear masks or face coverings whenever they enter a common area, including the public hallways or interact with the public. Employees can opt to use their own face covering or use a mask provided by the county commission. I do have masks, they came in today. They're thinner than I thought they would, but I've been told that that doesn't matter, that the purpose of the mask is to catch the water droplets, the basically the aerosolized um water droplets that come out when you talk or breathe or cough or sneeze. And so I do have um just very simple masks for employees who don't have them. And we have sent out kind of an order form to all the departments, asking them what they believe they need. Um, so I do have cloth reusable masks for employees, for those employees who need them. Um, they are not, again, we're not requiring at this point, we are just encouraging them to wear masks when they're in common areas. Um, and then the same for county buildings. Um, for individuals entering county buildings that are already wearing facial protection, they will be strongly encouraged to do so. I have disposable surgical masks for, that we can place at each entrance for members of the public. Um, I have about a thousand of those. Um, and then, so the next section or the next sentence here, individuals entering the judicial complex must wear facial protect, must wear facial protection or covering while in the judicial complex. Um, that is directly from Judge Hammer's order. Um, so he is requiring people who come into the judicial complex to wear a face covering. He also wants to require our employees who enter common areas in the courthouse or the judicial annex to wear the face covering. Um, and we are saying that it's a responsibility of the person seeking admission to provide their own appropriate and he has that, Judge Hammer has that in his draft order. However, I did include that we have a limited supply of masks for members of the public, um, but we cannot guarantee a consistent supply. And again, there's that caveat for uh early voting. Um, individual, they're not, they're encouraged to wear facial protection but are not required to do so.
Are the people working with the ballots wearing gloves or anything?
I don't know, Jackie, looks like she's still on, maybe she could answer that question? Jackie, are you still there?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Are people who are are the, are your employees who are working with ballots, are they wearing gloves?
Um, we have gloves, we have gloves for the public, we're gonna have gloves for all the poll workers, masks, uh, face shields for all the poll workers. Um, are you talking about handling the mail or are you talking about when, in early voting, when people come in to vote?
Uh, my concern was the person coming in to vote handles the ballot or whatever and.
Um, we're gonna be offering um the public hand sanitizer. I mean, we can enforce that they use, cannot enforce that they use it, but we are gonna have hand sanitizer available. We're gonna provide them with a glove. Um, and basically, um, the process is, is you go in and um you're handed a slip of paper that has a code and then you, when you go into the machine, you put it in. So it's the touchscreen, so you'll have the glove on while you're voting. Um, so we're trying to make it as safe as possible for the public that we can and for the poll workers. And we're gonna have um social distancing being marked out in the hallway in the courthouse. Um, also outside up until the the gate and then we're just, we can't tell people what to do out on the sidewalk, but we'll have things marked off for social distancing. And there's only five voting booths that we're gonna have in the um room for people to vote. Any other questions?
I guess the other question I have is for the sheriff. If the poll workers are wearing masks or face shields, I mean, will the bailiff be wearing face shields? I'm just trying to see if things look consistent.
We uh, we, at this point, we have got face masks for for the bailiffs, not uh, not uh, not the shields. I mean, quite frankly, what we've talked with the health department people and experts about that, they don't think that it's necessary for the function that we have.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. All right, the next section deals with social distancing. Um, this requires a part or asks, encourages, department heads or elected officials to implement measures that encourage social distancing of um employees including continuing to telework or remote work where feasible. And then I list um the measures that would be approved by the county commission to socially distanced employees, which would include telework, flexible work hours, staggered shifts and additional shifts that would, anything that would reduce the number of employees in the workplace at any one time. I should say that we, I, under this, will be asking you to revise that policy two sixteen, two sixteen A, which is the expanded leave. And the reason I asked you to change that is that we would get rid of the administrative leave, we would no longer have reduced work hours. So employees who are not able to telework would have to come back to work. However, we could use, um, you know, other measures like flexible work at, flexible work. So, you know, schedules of four tens, something like that, um, staggering shifts or, you know, expanding the workday for some employees. That way, we're still limiting the number of employees while they're still back to work, but we would get rid of the administrative leave for distance. So when we cut hours, we continue to pay those employees whose hours we cut. And there weren't very many. Um, initially, we did have some elected officials who started, who broke their um who broke their staff into teams and rotated them one week in, one week out, or one day in, one day out. Um, and then we had um some maintenance workers who were not working a full schedule, though all of those employees are now working a full schedule. So most of our employees right now are all working a full schedule, but I would ask you to get rid of that administrative leave if we're gonna open our buildings. So we would no longer provide administrative leave for the reduced work hours. You might decide that there are other instances when we provide that paid administrative leave, but for the reduced work hours, I'm gonna ask you in the next, in the next bullet under my um report to get rid of that. So, um, but I do list measures where we could continue social distancing. Um, the next section requires us to kind of mark off the six feet and maintain that distance between workers and customers and visitors in the workplace throughout um engineering administrative controls. So we have, when requested by various departments, install plexiglass shields at customer counters throughout county buildings. Um, the next section requires citizens to pre-schedule an appointment with their respective department in which they need access. Um, I think I heard on the call this afternoon that the assessor, while she would comply with that, would prefer not to do that because they have so many people coming in. So what I would suggest is that the commission allow um various department heads to require appointments. And if they cannot require appointments, that they um limit the number of people inside the waiting areas. And so in that next sentence, you'll see that um all waiting areas with inside and outside the building must be marked for every six feet to maintain appropriate social distancing. Um, we would limit the use of our lobbies waiting areas to, again, maintain social distancing. Um, and then again, I referenced that Judge Hammer's order that citizens entering the courthouse judicial building should comply, have to comply with the administrative order adopting Jefferson County Judicial Complex operating procedures for COVID nineteen. And that's the, that's the the name of his order. Um, and then we, again, encourage our citizens to use the no-contact measures that we have available, which include online systems, our drop boxes, email and telephone communications, as well as US mail. Um, I tried to give flexibility to department heads and elected officials as to how they wanted to implement this. So each department head and elected official is responsible for implementing appropriate social distancing measures to meet the needs of his or her. social distancing measures to meet the needs of his or her respective offices. In addition to the methods outlined in this policy, appropriate measures may also include limiting the number of customers, citizens in the building at any one time, establishing waiting areas outside of county buildings, and meeting with customers in alternative locations. We encourage all county boards and commissions to continue to conduct meetings virtually to limit the spread of the virus. And, and this is that section that I told you about before, where we're going to allow the county clerk. And Ralph, I understand that the, the issue that you've been called about has, that you mentioned earlier, has been resolved, that we have taken care of that issue in probate. But this, again, allows the, the county clerk to limit her services and her discretion so that she can devote her staff and have all hands on deck for the primary election, which is a little bit different this year, just because of all of, you know, just because of the mail-in requirement. The last section indicates how we're going to provide this policy. So we're going to put it out to all of our employees on email. We're going to put it on the county website. And then we are going to post notices at the entrance of county buildings informing the public of the procedures for each building.
Stephanie, do we have to address children at all in this?
I didn't. What were your thought, what were you thinking?
Well, currently, schools are closed, daycare is just starting back up. It's not full, you know, they're not in total operation yet. I'm wondering, and this may have to do with Jackie, too. People may bring their kids to the election because they don't have a place else to put them.
Yeah.
Well, I would think you would just have to treat them as members of the public. I mean, with, you know, you may not be able to get a face mask on a little kid, and I understand that, and I think everybody will use their common sense when dealing with situations like that.
And I think it's up to the parents to see that they're, you know, they, they're the ones really responsible for them.
And also, as part of that was employees bringing their children to work. Do we need to address that at all?
So, um...
And, and I should say, when I was assistant prosecutor, I did bring my kids sometimes, but that was, I, I don't, I just don't know if we need to address it at all.
So there's still, the expanded FMLA kind of addresses childcare. I've encouraged department heads to be flexible with teleworking and remote working for employees who have childcare issues. You know, if they can't remote work or telework, there's still the FMLA option in the expanded leave that was expanded through the federal legislation earlier this year. I think we have, we have policies in place. And if you go up here, I list all the policies that would, that would help promote workers staying at home when they are sick or when they need other leave. So I think that we've addressed it in other policies. I think we have a pretty, I think our workplace is pretty pro-christian, pretty pro-family. I try to encourage people to be flexible, especially now. If we run into an issue, I think that we have the policies in place to address it right now. I have occasionally also brought my own children to work. I don't do that too often because it kind of turns into a madhouse, but I have done it. So, and I did have an employee contacted me earlier today about coming back to work and, and being unable to find childcare. And I think I was able to address that employee's concerns. And, and they emailed me back and said that they were fine with that. So I do think that we, our policies address it in other areas. If you want me to add something, you know, again, we can add something if you, if you want me to, but I do think that there are policies out there.
That sounds like you have it covered.
Okay.
General comment real quick. Kids under two don't need masks. As a father of an eight-month-old, he can't even keep his pee in his mouth for a month.
And, I mean, I have a four and a six-year-old, and they do not like to wear the mask, I can tell you that. So I will add that, that children under two are not required to wear masks or facial cover.
Okay, what are, what are everybody's thoughts on this COVID-19 return-to-work policy? I think you've covered all the bases. I can't think of anything else. Anyone else's thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think Stephanie did a good job putting this together. Thanks. I like how it says it's suggested until maybe tomorrow when the governor throws something out there.
Yeah.
So it could, it could, you know, I spent time doing this, and it could totally change tomorrow. And if it does, we may need to have a special meeting. Oh, there was one other thing. I'm, I'm sorry. I did have a request from a department that we delay opening until June 1st because they wanted more time to, to mark off the waiting area and, you know, get all their sanitizer and all that stuff in place. That department has actually seen, seen an increase in their work because, so they have seen a 30% increase in, and it's, it's engineering. They've seen a 30% increase in building permits from this time last year. So they're actually very busy even being close to the public. So that was a request that I received, that if the commission could hold off until June 1st. If you didn't want to hold off for everyone, another option would be to just open the Mason Building on June 1st. And if you just said, no, you got to open on Tuesday, then that's another option as well. So those are, those are your options. I, I did want to mention that that was a request that I did receive when I sent this policy around. They wanted time to kind of figure out where they were going to put the public and how they were going to implement it, and they didn't think that just having, so we have Friday, Monday's a holiday, and then we open on Tuesday, that's May 26th. So that was a request that I had received.
So, does anyone know what time the governor's press conference is tomorrow? I mean, it seems to kind of move around, so.
Yeah, and it, it could even change after we say what we're going to say.
It's 12:30. I think it's supposed to be 12:30, but, I mean, who knows?
Right. Well, and it seems like from the comments I heard today on the afternoon conference call that he's implying that he's going to come up with something for the former hotspot counties or our county in Berkeley because we have rising confirmed cases. What are anyone's thoughts about delaying, even if we're in agreement with all this return-to-work policy, delaying it until June 1? Or, I'm just, you know, trying to look at all options. I know that would not get everybody back to work, so.
Go ahead, Ralph, I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying, the courthouse is going to be partially open on next Wednesday anyway. So I think we need to have the policy subject to flexibility with whatever the state or governor or whoever really is in charge in Charleston.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, I can see.
Yeah, so it would be four workdays, but you're right, we're going to have public coming in for early voting on May 26th.
Yeah, yeah. So do we want to give any special consideration to engineering and the Mason Building? Would it be too confusing to have them delay by a week? Because that is, it's pretty limited when you go inside as far as space, open space. So I don't know how they'll do their marking.
Well, it seems to me like they've been doing, even in light of the courthouse being closed and social distancing and working from home and all that. I think they've been pretty busy. Been getting things done. So as long as they can continue to do what they've been doing and serve, serve the public, even though the doors aren't open, I don't have a problem with allowing them to delay until June 1st as long as they can continue to do the work that needs to be done. And if they have something that's urgent, something that needs to be signed, you know, physical contact is necessary or physical appearance is necessary, then they can work with that person to make an appointment. But I don't have a problem with extending that office till June 1st opening. I can't hear you, Stephanie.
Because I had my mute button on. They've been doing that. They have been, you know, if someone needs to meet with them, they've been meeting with them. And sometimes they have to with building permits. So they've been continuing to operate. But the public just right now can't walk in, even if it's by appointment. So it, for them, it really, I mean, they're going to continue to work no matter when they open. It's just they don't, they want time to like, you know, kind of get it together. And if, if you're familiar with Roger, he is very methodical. He's very thorough. So I think he wants to have a plan in place, and he feels rushed, and I get that. So I'm in, I'm inclined to recommend to you to allow that. I think that is the building that sees the most foot traffic for people coming in. So I, I'm fine with delaying that because they're going to continue to work, and they have been. And I think that that department has done really well with teleworking and also managing the increase in building permits. So I don't have a problem, I don't foresee a problem doing that.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't need it.
Good question. I'm having a lot, a mind lapse right now. At what point in time is the impact fee paid?
It is paid when you get your building permit.
Okay, so do we think that this increase in building permits is a direct result of the pandemic or the fact that county commission is looking to redo impact fees?
I don't, some of the building permits are not new homes. So they're decks additions that would not ordinarily pay the impact fee. So I, I really think it's, it's, it is related to the pandemic in that people are home and they see things that need to be done on, on their, you know, houses or whatever, and they're coming in applying for building permits. We do, we are seeing some new homes as well. But it's possible with the recalculation, it could go down. And it has gone down in the past when we've done the recalculation. So there's no telling what that recalculation will do. The last time we did it, there, there are categories that went down.
Well, and I think another thing that's going on is very, very low interest rates, historically low. And I think if anybody had a thought of doing anything, they're doing it. So, so there's lots of things to consider. I, too, am okay with engineering or the Mason Building not quote "opening" or till June 1. Well, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the COVID-19 return-to-work policy with the amendments that have been done this evening online, with the exception of, and that it'll be effective on May 26th, with the exception of the Mason Building, which will follow this policy by June, on June 1.
Okay.
Okay. Do you have any more? Go ahead.
I did want to make, at the request of the assessor, I don't want to hamstring her in. So I was going to make the change for an appointment that, that departments are encouraged to require citizens to reschedule an appointment instead of requiring that citizens pre-schedule an appointment. So it, so for example, if the assessor can't, doesn't want to operate that way, she could implement the other social distancing measures that are down there. So, and I list the accepted social distancing measures. So I'd like to make that change. And then we have not decided what we will do with employees who are sent home. Will we provide paid administrative leave after they've exhausted their COVID health leave?
I think there needs to be a, a limit to that, though, from my perspective. I mean, a timeframe. I can't, I don't think it can be in perpetuity, but.
No.
Yeah, I agree with Josh. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, so they already provided a bank of 80 hours. Additional, addition, in addition to whatever we provide in our leave, policies are very generous.
Yeah, they are.
So we, we provide a day and a half of sick leave, and that's what they would use if they have a sick bank available, they use sick leave first. About a day and a half of sick leave a month. And then our, our annual leave is also very generous. It's based on years of service, but those, those leave banks are pretty generous as well. So, and, and in addition to that, they're provided with the additional 80 hours. So I'm inclined not to provide any additional administrative leave at this time unless I'm seeing employees who are, and there always is the option of paid adminis, we have policies that allow paid administrative leave, but I don't think we should make it the default option.
Right.
I, I, I'm good with that.
So it'll stay the same, okay.
Well, and I'll just add that to my, are you going to add that to the text, Stephanie? Or how, should I put that in my?
It's not in there now, so that I don't need to make a change. I just wanted to know if you wanted to make a change.
Okay, all right, I got it.
And then the final thing that's not addressed in here is right now, under our emergency declaration, we are preventing dispatchers from also working as first responders or in healthcare where they might be exposed to COVID-19. This impacts about, I think, only two dispatchers. One who is a volunteer and one who works for the ESA. I will say that for one of the dispatchers, and both of these dispatchers are really good dispatchers, one of the dispatchers that hasn't been working for the ESA has actually been covering shifts because that individual is not working for the ESA. So they're able to pick up shifts in addition to the regularly scheduled shifts at the 911 Center to help us cover shifts when we have employees out. So it's worked in trying to limit the exposure of the dispatchers who are in very tight quarters and also allowing us to cover shifts. So you need to decide if you want that policy to continue now that we're starting to reopen the buildings.
I, I think right now it is absolutely critical we continue that policy. We have got to keep E911 workers healthy and safe. It would be in terrible shape if we can't cover those shifts.
And I kind of wanted to show you something that I was going to post. So this is, thanks to Annette Gavin, this is what they sent out to the businesses who wanted to, to require people to wear masks, but they didn't want to, you know, do it in a kind of a, for lack of a better term, kind of in-your-face. And so I asked her to make one that we're encouraging people to wear masks. Again, this policy doesn't require it, but we're encouraging them to do that. So I, with your permission, we kind of posted this out at the, at the doors as well and, you know, kind of get that message out there along with the businesses who'll be using the same graphic. This says Jefferson County, West Virginia, but she's made them for Pearlstown, Ransay, all the municipalities. So, I was planning on using that. I know that businesses are going to be using that. We developed this through our, the COVID-19 task force that I'm serving on. So I thought that would be a good thing to put, to post at the front of the building. It's kind of a friendly reminder, hey, we are, we're encouraging you to wear a mask.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that. It's very, very, it's good.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it's light, you know? It's not something that says you must, you're required to wear a mask before you walk through the door. So, you know, it shouldn't give people a bad, a bad feeling, but, right.
Okay.
And now I'm done interrupting, I think.
Yeah, okay. Well, so every, the motion is on the floor to approve the COVID-19 return-to-work policy to take effect May 26th, with the exception of the Mason Bu, Building, which is planning, zoning and engineering, which will occur on June 1st. Any more questions or comments?
Stephanie, I just want to say, I just want to compliment Stephanie. I know she has worked nonstop since all of this started, and you've done a great job. I really appreciate everything you've done. You've kept the commission informed, you've written these policies, and you've worked with every department and, and agency. And I just want to say I'm, I'm very grateful to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah. Just some information about the building permits, because Josh had asked that question. So Becky just told me that they've had 165 permits, and 40 of them are for homes since March 19th. So it looks like the majority are for other things other than new homes.
Okay.
All right. And now I am done interrupting.
Okay. The motion is on the floor. Do I need to repeat it for anybody? All those in favor of approving, um. This COVID return to work policy, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries and I want to echo, uh, Patsy's, uh, comments and I know, um. I'm not always on the afternoon, um, update through Homeland Security. And rarely listen to the governor and she also does all that and is, um, heading up the task force. Uh, the task force, which I think you're still, uh, meeting twice a week or once a week.
We're still meeting twice a week because.
Yeah. Lots of questions.
Adding things to the opening and sometimes those guidelines are not clear. Um, the health department, I mean, we've got a really great team here in the county. We really do. Um. And the health department has done, um, just exceptional work trying to figure out. How the, you know, what those guidelines mean and how we're going to implement them. And, you know, my staff as well, um. Here at the Hunter House and throughout the county, we have, we are really lucky. We have really great employees here.
Yeah. Well, the, the health department has been excellent. I've just really not known the individuals. But I know their voices now through the afternoon conference calls and, um, you know, they, they get as much info. You know, their direct line of information is the governor's press conference too. So. They're, they're trying to sort things out as best they can. So.
Well, and I just want to say too, that, uh, uh, we had a, uh, I forget what meeting I was in, uh, last week, but the, uh. One of the mayors was on the line and he just really wanted to compliment Stephanie on the work she's done on the table. And how grateful, um, he is as a, as a mayor, that the municipalities are all. Have a seat at the table and they're really appreciative of the work you've done, Stephanie.
Thanks. It's good to hear.
Okay.
Uh, I want to, did we vote on that? You voted on that, right?
Yes. Now this, um, revision for policy 216A.
Yes. So that is what I talked about before, um, which would eliminate. The administrative leave since we're bringing employees back. Um, it would, it would eliminate that paid administrative leave for employees. So they'd still have all their COVID banks, of course, all their regular sick banks. Um. And. All of that, but we would no longer be providing that paid administrative leave because we're not going to have the reduced hours anymore.
Yeah. So that's what the, that's what the revision, um, says.
Yes.
Okay. Um. Would anybody care to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll move that we, uh, eliminate the administrative, uh, paid leave, uh, for policy 21 to 16A.
Second. Okay. Do we need an effective date?
Let's do it for, um, the day we open. Let's do it for, um.
26.
May 26.
26. Okay, effective May 26.
Okay. We've somewhat discussed this already. Are there any other questions or comments? Uh, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Um. Let's see, you have discussed Jefferson County declaration and related issues.
So now that we have this new policy, which we've implemented. That policy would replace the declaration. So you would rescind that declaration and, and you've already implemented the, the new guideline. So I think we would. Rescind that declaration, which provides, um, guidance for closing county buildings.
Okay. Well, I'll move that we rescind the Jefferson County declaration.
Second.
Questions or comments from anybody? All those in favor of rescinding the Jefferson County Declaration, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. And then.
Go ahead.
The next, the last two things I have are, are related, but I wanted to list them out in case there were, were questions revolving, involving each one of them. But. Basically the $100,000 block grant is related to cares in that the letter from the governor says it can only be spent on cares eligible expenses. The governor continues to indicate on his press conferences that we would be able to, um, recoup lost revenue. He. Feels confident that the, the federal government is going to change the guidelines. Right now we cannot recoup any, uh, lost revenue. Due to COVID-19. Um, so I have discussed this block grant in the task force. We discuss it pretty regularly. Most of the cities are similar to the county where they've purchased some PPE. But most of their losses are coming from, you know, lack of BNO or sales tax or gambling revenue. Um, which we can't use that for. So, and, and some of the cities indicated that if they did receive money from this, they would give it to places like the senior center. Who's had to change the way that they do business, um, by delivering more meals. And I know Commissioner Nolan mentioned that they're no longer receiving. The, um. The, uh. The meals from the track because the track isn't open. So what I decided to tell. The task force and then ask for you to approve is that we actually create a grant. Similar to what the, the portal that the governor has. I don't want to make it too complicated, but I think we have a, we have to have a way where the commission can. One, ensure that we're not doubling up on funds so that the commission didn't give an organization something and then the municipality turned around and gave the organization that same thing. And to also ensure that the expenses are COVID related. There is one mayor who wanted. To use it for, uh, overtime for utility workers. And when I asked whether or not that was related to COVID. Um. He wasn't sure. So I think that we also have to have a way. Because we are responsible for accounting for this money to the governor. So we've spent none of this money. It is in an account right now. Um, waiting to be spent and there are other counties who are doing the exact same thing. They are holding on to that money to see where they are. And I have assured the municipalities that we have not spent any of the money. However, what I would like to do is to develop just kind of a simple grant and then the commission could evaluate the requests that are received. Um, and then determine how we're going to use this money. Of course, we could use it for our own expenses. We do have some PPE expenses. That we've incurred and I know that, um, the ESA has had a, uh, probably more significant PPE expenses than anybody else, maybe the sheriff next. So we could also use it on our own expenses as well. But I think for municipalities, and I do think that there are some organizations out there. Community organizations that would be eligible to receive the funding even under the CARES Act. So what I wanted to do with your permission is to create a very simple form and treat it almost like a grant where people would apply to us. We would evaluate their needs and then, you know, provide funding based on that.
Now, that's a great idea, Stephanie. I like that a lot.
I do too. And I'm thinking about, um. Just like a, a library is opening back up and how will they be able to afford. PPE for their staff or whatever they want the public to do and even Parks and Rec and all that. So.
Right.
Yeah, there's a lot to think about.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And I don't know that I need, I mean, if I have kind of unanimous consent to do that, I can kind of develop the form myself. I'll look at the, the governor's website to see how they're doing the CARES funding. Like I said, I don't want it to be too complicated. I think there was one mayor who was concerned when I said that and I was like, look, I, I will even help you do it if you. If you need help, I will help you navigate it. Um, I'm not trying to make it complicated or, or create a bureaucracy or additional hoops. I'm just. Trying to figure out a way where we can prioritize these requests and spend the money in the most effective manner. And it would be true for, so, you know, I'd reach out to the ESA and say, you know, just submit this very simple form and tell us what your expenses are and what you want reimbursement for.
Okay. Everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Um, Caleb and Josh and Ralph?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't, okay. I didn't hear. Okay. Sounds good, Stephanie.
Okay. And then. The CARES Act funding, I just, an update, the governor has find, has created a portal where you can go in. And apply for that funding. The first deadline is for June 15, is June 15th for expenses that were incurred, incurred between March. 15th and May 15th, I think. So that deadline is coming up. Uh, so they just opened that the other day, um, and we do have some expenses that are eligible for that. So we will be sure to go in and, and apply for that. Um, I did want to let you know, we, we've kind of danced around it all night, but there was a spike. In cases here, um, we heard that at the press conference today, um, and I think it's related to that expanded testing. So in response to that, because they did see a spike in relation to that testing, they're planning a second round of testing here. Uh, the National Guard is apparently on their way here now to assist us with. Any measures that we need, um, but the, we do have dates for that expanding test, expanded testing. It'll be June 5th and 6th.
Okay.
When I talked to Steve earlier today, he wasn't sure if they would use the same site. Um. And it might eliminate confusion if they did, um, but we do know that they will be here on June 5th and 6th and hopefully we will be able to, um. We'll be able to get the word out a little bit before. I feel like we had a pretty good turnout for. What was basically a day's notice. Uh, we had a, a lot of citizens turn out for that. So, um. I just wanted to let you know that we do have those dates. I do not have the locations yet and if I find out what the locations are, I'll let you know.
I, I think Maryland had the same spike and probably the same reason. They started open testing there too.
Well, and I noticed Loudoun County had a big spike too. So, yeah.
Yes. And, and the governor has mentioned, you know, when you listen to those press conferences, which is I think why we were a little confused as to what the hotspot meant for us. Because he, he and Dr. Marsh have always mentioned that Eastern Panhandle is a spot that, you know, to watch out for, but. We never really got anything else. Um, so. And they've, and it is. Due in some part to our location to Virginia and DC. I think the governor is right about that. Um. But if he's going to add any additional requirements, apparently there is going to be some announcement tomorrow. I don't know what that's going to be. Um, it could be for face coverings. It could be to require them here. I don't know. Um, before he's indicated that he hasn't, if he does require that, I'm just going to change the policy to be consistent. With what the governor, so if he says we have to, if we're required to wear face coverings, then our policy, you know, will say consistent with the governor's order. So it's not the county commission ordering it, it's the governor ordering it.
Okay.
Um, but.
That makes sense. And then if any, if he comes up with anything else, we may have to have an emergency meeting or something on what, um, yeah. Tuesday morning.
Yes.
I don't know, I don't know, you know, what kind of managerial style the governor has, but some, uh, managers that I have known. Uh, tend to manage by saying, okay, there's a bomb coming. It's coming. Here it comes. It's coming before they actually implement it. So he said face masks about 20 times or more today.
Yes.
Okay.
And he didn't want to do it. And so, which he also said that same sort of thing when he said he didn't want to like.
Right.
Do, um, hotspots and things like that. So I, I, I think it was that. So.
And, and Dr. Marsh has mentioned extensively face masks and I actually did a little research on my own because he was mentioning Japan. Um, as, and I guess there's a study that will be published, uh, about Japan. And they have not implemented the, they haven't closed their economy the way that we did. But what they have done is require face coverings. And if you look, um, the articles I read talked about their mortality rate due to COVID and. Some of that I think might be, maybe Japanese people might be a little healthier than, um. You know, than people in the United States, but. Even looking at their transmission rates, it's much lower than the United States, even with them not closing their economy. And the study that will be published, uh, seems to suggest that that's due to the use of facial coverings. Uh, so it was an, it was interesting to look at that and I went on to the, to the, to the world dashboard to kind of compare the transmission rates and they are a lot lower. Than many other countries that have actually shut down their economy and Japan did not do that. So in many Asian countries, they were already accustomed to wearing masks. They do it already. Um. So that is the difference. And there's a study out there that indicates that the difference is in the face coverings, not in the shutting everything down. Um, and I thought that was really interesting. And I told Nathan earlier today that we're kind of, you know, I feel like we're kind of winging it. Sometimes we're just looking at. All these different things that these countries are doing and seeing, you know, what, what is working. But, um, it was a really interesting, interesting. I read two different articles on Japan and Dr. Marsh seems to have, um, latched on to it as well because he's mentioned that study boat. Two days in a row now, um, consider, concerning face coverings. So. Um, anyway, for whatever.
Okay.
Stephanie, Stephanie, were you going to address the, um, the Charles Town thing they talked about for the county commission comment that evidently we didn't get to comment on? That article 177?
Yeah. So I did not, I checked my email and I, we checked our mail and I checked with Sandy. We did not, um. We did not receive notice that we can tell unless it got lost in the mail, but we did not, and Sandy has been very diligent. Uh, checking the mail these last, you know, six weeks. So I meant to reach out to the city manager and I, that slipped away from me, but I will look and see. How they sent that and who they sent it to, because I did not, I didn't recall seeing it. Sandy didn't recall seeing it and no one in here. Uh, recalled seeing that, that notification. So I'm going to see manager.
So what are you talking about?
So they, um, have an ordinance change, uh, for their utility board and they. Were on second reading on Monday.
Oh.
And they indicated that they didn't, that they sent notice to the city and to the county. And that they didn't receive any comments back and Commissioner Compton had contacted me to see if we had received that. And I didn't remember seeing it. So I asked Sandy if she had seen it, um, and she said that she hadn't. And that's something we would have definitely remembered. I mean, we would.
Yeah.
Cut that out to the commission and.
Well, and that's what I'm wondering if they sent it, sent it to me for some reason as president and, and maybe I missed it, but I've been trying to check things carefully too. So. Okay.
No commissioners commented or anything or were aware of that?
No.
No, I wasn't aware of any of that. I didn't receive anything.
I, I don't know how they went along doing that without comment from the county commission. So I don't know if that's even what the deal is, but I think that needs to go on the agenda for next meeting to discuss that.
I will. I'll put it on the agenda.
Okay, um. Uh, Josh, why don't you co, continue or do county commission reports?
Yeah, that's fine. So, uh, Parks and Rec has had a, quite a few virtual meetings. Obviously they're pretty concerned about the budget implications. Looking seriously at their programs for the summer. And I think they were able to start looking at possibly reopening soon. So they're, they're in the phase right now of what staff to bring back, how to do it and so forth. But, uh, yeah, they're definitely concerned about the budget problems there. Um, Solid Waste Authority, they've been meeting virtually as well. Uh, just normal business there. They, they've seen an uptick of county residents coming in. For obvious reasons, everybody's cleaning their house out right now, but. It, it's, it's running pretty smoothly currently. So that's pretty much all I have to report.
Well, Josh, Josh, I can agree with you on the amount of, uh, trash going to the dump because I see them going past my house. A lot of people are cleaning out.
It's good for the dump. They're making some money. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been out there a few times myself and I have hardly ever been out there. So. They usually pick everything up, but see they're not taking bulk items now. So unless they've just recently changed that. So they're not taking bulk items. So. I guess that's why a lot of people are, are out there, taking things out there.
Yeah. That's, that's all I have. And, uh, my, uh, the laptop to approve bills is not functioning very well. So I have to bring that into the office to get that fixed.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for doing that. Now that, you know, you don't have to do that in the office. It kind of slips my mind that, uh, we. All right. Well, thank you for doing that. Now that, you know, you don't have to do that in the office, it kind of slips my mind that we do have a commissioner doing that. So thank you for performing, performing that service.
Yeah.
Caleb?
Not much, basically. Meetings like this. So that's about it.
Okay. All right. Ralph?
I did miss a meeting of the planning commission about two weeks ago. But they are working on a solar policy. And I think you've all got some emails from Bob Aitchison and I think Casto, who may be opposed to what Bob Aitchison said. I don't know. But that's, that's an issue that's going to be coming up over the next few months. Also, the planning commission is having a hearing, I think, at the end of May on the proposed updates of the regulations. I don't have the details on that. I, you know, they have a contractor working on that. Otherwise, I think I sloughed everything off to Patsy. I sent her an email with the a couple of meetings coming up. And I think she's got, she's going to be covering those on video. Thank you, Patsy.
You're welcome, Ralph. Yeah, I had one of those yesterday afternoon at Hepmo meeting, actually. And yeah, we have Region 9 coming up pretty soon too. So funny, it's committee meeting. Thank you very much, Ralph. But other than that, I've been, we've been meeting, the JCDAs had, we, we, that, that group just has so many committees and so many meetings. And it's a, it's a really busy time. So we've been interviewing candidates for the director's position. We've narrowed it down. And so the commission will be getting something soon from Lynn Goodwin, who will be presenting something to the commission soon with regard to an executive director. So we've had meetings with candidates. We've had JCDAs executive committee meetings, nomination committee meetings, and a regular meeting. We've had, I've had a convention and visitors bureau meeting on Wednesday. And so thank goodness for, for Zoom and GoToTalkings because we are still getting a lot done. And I think it's, technology is a wonderful thing. So it helps us to keep moving when things like COVID happen. But that's all I have to report.
Okay. You know, I, my meetings have been virtual too. Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority, they have reduced their, their routes, well, not their routes, but how many buses they have running. And of course, you know, they were limited to five people in a bus, which includes the driver, which makes it pretty challenging. They have added back another driver in Berkeley County because in, and people at Walmart, they'd end up with a line there waiting. So a lot of challenges there, but they're working their way through it and so forth. And they actually figured out it'd be easier just to go with no fare instead of having their drivers dealing with money and close contact with passengers and so forth. So they are meeting the needs as best they can. And they're still doing their on-demand calls for, especially, you know, transportation to dialysis or a doctor's appointment or something like that. And of course, we've had Farmland Protection Board meeting recently to wrestling with the easements and so forth. So that work continues. And I do want to just let the public know that many folks are meeting in the county watching things COVID-related. Homeland Security has, has this meeting every afternoon and we review the statistics on the global national Maryland, Virginia, regional and Berkeley and Jefferson County areas. It involves the Health Department, hospital representative, coed, Red Cross, fire and EMS, law enforcement, E911, energy, schools, county commission and municipality and elected officials. So we are trying to keep everyone informed. You know, and get our questions answered or clarified some of the information and just trying to figure it all out as we go along. But there are a lot of people that are watching the numbers and very aware of what's going on around us as well as within our own county. That's all I have. Is there any other business to come before us?
I move we adjourn.
Well, I can forward adjourn. Are we, are we all having to show up tomorrow to sign something?
Yes, we have to come into the county commission office and sign the, the books, the record books for the assessor. And there's no specific time that we need to be in there, Stephanie. I mean, it's better if we space it out.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't have it here in my office. I don't think, unless Sandy got it.
This is Sandy.
Okay.
You hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Bring it up to me in the morning.
Okay.
And then after everybody signs, then I have to notarize it to make sure she gets it back.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll probably be in early because, because we have plans for the weekend and we're going to head to the mountains. So I'll be in early.
Okay.
Like nine o'clock early.
I'll be there. I'll make sure I can get them to me.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you.
See, I think I have a motion to adjourn. Did I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Being properly moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Patsy, have a good weekend.
Thank you. I sure hope so. It's going to rain, but that's all right. I don't care.
Yeah, just get away, get out.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, everyone.
All right. Take care.
Okay. Bye.
Bye.